Sorry about that. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, ready? Okay. All right. We are now public.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. And there was no action taken in closed session. So let's call this meeting to order. Kawhi, do we have the flag for the flag salute?
We do. I will go ahead and share it now.
Please join us for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the teleconference board meeting protocol.
Yes, very good. So I will, again, for our board and our audience, this is the second time now that we're using a different feature with Zoom, which is called the webinar feature. So it will be a little bit different in terms of how we will work through public comment. First, please know that our session is being recorded and that devices need to be muted. And we may be muting for you if you've not done that. That the chat box is not active for participants and our attendees with what we're doing. And if it does become active, we're going to ask that you not use it because there's a different way of providing public comment for webinar. First, we do have an email to, Kawhi, to Mrs. Bach by Tuesday at noon. And Mrs. Bach, I believe that we did not have public comment by email to you. Did that be correct?
That's correct. That's correct, Dr. Sharr.
Okay. Another way that we are now able to take public comment by teleconference is for using a raised hand. So if you're an attendee, when we get to report or action items and you would like to make public comment, then what you'll do is you will use that feature on the bottom, the bottom part of your screen. And information will go to Mrs. Bach and to another assistant, Mrs. Heron. And we will work together to make sure that you will be able to make public comment of up to three minutes related to an item on the agenda. So the other thing I'd like to share is that if there are connectivity challenges that our board experiences, what we will do is we will delay the meeting five minutes while we're working on that. And then we'll work with the board president to see when we'll reconvene. And then also for action items, the motion will be followed by a roll call vote. All right, so we're ready?
Thank you. Yes, we are ready.
Okay.
Right. So we have reports, LCAP Goal One. We have the James B. McClatchy Foundation Pre-Kindergarten and English Learner Grant.
Great. Kawhi, can you bring the powerpoint up on our screen, please? Thank you. Okay. I just have, before I highlight the grant with a few slides and a few extra pictures, I just wanted to kind of just give you a little bit of a history on our partnership with the James B. McClatchy Foundation, formerly known as the Central Valley Foundation. Back in 2014, we were awarded a $400,000 grant over four years to support the development of language for our elementary English learners. And then in 2018, we wrote and were awarded a $70,000 planning grant for, to support preschool English learners readiness for kindergarten. Over the summer, we were awarded approximately $25,000 in emergency COVID dollars to provide our preschool families with the technology needed for distance learning. And then, excuse me, and actually, last year, I forgot. Last year was our implementation grant in 2019. And that was almost $500,000 to implement our planning grant from the year before. So James B. McClatchy Foundation has really, they do have quite an investment in our community in Galt. And I just wanted to, when I talk about our community and our staff, I just wanted to quickly just kind of review the staff that Central Valley Foundation, through their grant, has really been able to fund for our district. It's 12 staff members. The staffing positions are a prevention intervention coordinator, a preschool site director. Beginning next year, it'll be two bilingual preschool teachers, a bilingual home visitor, three bilingual community outreach, I'm an assistant and coordinator, a bilingual office assistant, bilingual instructional assistants. So all of our staff, the staff in our district are either fully or partially funded by the Central Valley Foundation. So here we are in year 2020. And for 2020, 21, that's year three of this grant. It's $483,000 that they've invested this year in our pre-K English learners and families. And then in the year 2021 and 22, year four, it'll be $499,000, almost $500,000 to support the development of pre-kindergarten and improve the transition to TK and K. So the first picture we have is one of our preschool teachers in Extended Learning Opportunity After School. And it's one of the, it is one of the activities that are funded by the JBMF Foundation. And the next few slides, quickly, I want to go over, I believe there are five key goals for our slides and some pictures. So Kawhi, the next one. The first goal of our Growing Strong Learners Grants is dual capacity building through family engagement and leadership opportunities. Dual capacity learning means that both parents and teachers participate in leadership and engagement so that parents, working with the teacher, can take what they've learned into the home and work with their children. And you'll see on the screen several of the different areas that we've worked on to develop leaders and increase the parent engagement. And the picture on this page is our academic parent and teacher team. The parents listened and looked at the data and how their children were doing in mathematics. And then they practiced playing the games. And then they took those games home. And they'll be practicing that same skill at home, at which time then they came back and the teachers assessed after a few months, see how the students were doing. Next slide. Ongoing professional learning articulated with TK8 Galt Bright Futures Initiatives. And in this picture, you'll see is a picture of our pre-kindergarten teachers. And the professional learning is the academic parent and teacher teams. That is our coach who's come to support the teachers and help them develop leadership skills to actually do those parent-teacher teams on their own. And you'll see on the screen, three other areas of professional development that we want to work on for this year. Next. Developing a dual-language immersion program. And we've talked about this last year. We got a little bit slowed down on our timeline with our distance learning. But it's still out there and it's still in the planning stages, especially in the pre-kindergarten where it's more informal. In the picture, you'll see a pre-kindergarten class. They, it was an extended day after activity. They read Tortillitas para Mama, Tortillas for Mom. And then they actually made tortillas and sang some songs. And so we are working this year. We want to specifically, we'd like to, we want to research with a consultant. We want to find an evidence-based, an evidence-based language development program. And you'll notice that when I say dual-language immersion, that's in our district, that would be English and Spanish. But I also wanted to kind of introduce you. When we talk about English learners, it's children learning English. I'd like you to kind of consider a term called dual-language learners. And a dual-language learner is any child learning another language. So for our children who speak Spanish, there are dual-language learners that are learning English. But soon, in the coming years, we will have English-speaking children who will be learning Spanish. So the term dual-language learner is much more inclusive, especially in the pre-kindergarten world. Next slide. Expanded learning opportunities for dual-language learners. And this says ages zero to five specifically. And I talked about in the staffing, we were able to, next, last year, we increased a preschool class, a three-year-old class for our English learners. Also, it is a heterogeneous group. So we have English-speaking students and Spanish-speaking students in that class. We are getting ready to launch a second home visiting program this year to work with families to support them supporting their own children, zero to three, until they come onto campus. And we're increasing our book exchange from 50 to 100 children. Okay. Next. Bridging the transition between pre-K and kinder is so important. And our goal here is twofold. It's for our dual-language learners. And we have one here on the screen that they perform at the same or higher levels of other groups by kindergarten. That's our overarching goal. And that their families are engaged and participate at the same or higher levels. And next slide. And then I just wanted to end with a few strategies successfully launched in year one and will be further refined in years two to three. We am fortunate to have an amazing pre-K leadership team that continues to align our ECE grants and the district initiatives. It's also working to, you know, align our pre-kindergarten services with our special education program as well. Continuing to use our bilingual community outreach assistance to increase parent participation rates, not just at preschool. They virtually are at every school site for any activity that's needed to help bring parents on board and engage them. Supporting social-emotional learning with Second Step this year. I mentioned working with consultants to identify and implement a culturally relevant, evidence-based language program. And then just continue to develop the Fairsite, the FLC Maker Space that the JBMF Foundation funded last year. So we have an entire room just ready with the STEAM learning activities. So we hope to be able to fully utilize that this year. So anyway, is there any questions that you may have about the James B. McClatchy Foundation grant? Or comments? No? Well, thank you.
Donna, I just wanted to say, by the way, this is excellent in terms of, I know how much of this, you know, what we do at Fairsite depends on grant writing. And I think your expertise in grant writing says a lot about, you know, how we're able to do or why we're able to do what we do. So I just wanted to point that out, that I think you're doing an excellent job at that. And I think the results show it.
Thank you. And with our leadership team, we also received quite a bit of funding from First Five Sacramento for school readiness. We're just getting ready to write another three-year grant for our First Five program. So yeah, we do stay busy at the pre-kindergarten world, writing grants to expand. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great work. Thank you, Donna. Okay, if there's no more comments on that, let's go to report to the reopening of schools progression to on-campus learning and services.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking, we just finished with the future being bright at Fairsite. And I think the future is getting brighter for our district as well. As hard as everything is, every day, I am so grateful for just the responsiveness of employees within our district and others, board members, other agencies we work with. It's helping us get to a brighter future in this very challenging pandemic. So every day brings some progress and challenges and, of course, new information. And it can be confusing. Last week, last Tuesday, our Board of Trustees had a study session, or excuse me, a public hearing related to the learning continuity and attendance plan. And part of what we did from that meeting, based on board discussion and what has transpired, was that we thought it was time then, based on direction, to go ahead and revise our initial transitional model so that it was reflective of these other, say, areas that are now coming forward from the state in our transitional model, which really does reflect a progression. So Kawhi, Mrs. Bach, I'm going to ask that you pull up the transitional model. I'd like to start with an overview of what we have done. And I want to recognize Mrs. Bach. For her initiative and her skill to listen not only to our board, but look at other documents and work with us to help us revise this model. What you see on this model going down for each column is that we had the transitions that we were working to make. Again, we are in Level One Distance Learning. And what we did in this model is that, how it's been revised, is we've now integrated into it alignment with the tiers of pandemic severity so that you, so that we could see how we're looking to transition from one model of learning to another of services depending on the level of pandemic severity. So also, what is in this is that there are, in the Transition Factors row, you'll note that the tiers that are identified at the state for the risk levels are defined so that we can remember and be able to reference. Well, what does it mean? How is it that a county is in Tier One? What has to do with the number of COVID cases per 100,000 people? And also, the percentage of positive tests. So what happens is that the colors of the tiers change as the risk level improves. So that has been integrated into this. In addition, at the bottom of the matrix, we have outlined the elementary school waiver that does not include middle school. It's TK six. And what is required for a district to have to make that work, along with the new guidance that we received. And Kawhi, I'm not sure if you can highlight the second column going down. The targeted specialized support services. Even if you just take the cursor, perfect, right in there. That column going down, this outlines something that wasn't there before. This was a service, a way of providing on-campus services that does not require an elementary waiver. If a district, you know, is ready to do so, a district can serve approximately 25% of high-needs children in small cohort groups. So what we are striving to do is progress from where we are right now, which is Level One Distance Learning, move towards providing small-group services to reopening every school with precautions when we move into the Tier Two and that we have areas in place that I'm going to talk to our board about just a few minutes, and then again, progress through. So again, I wanted to start with this. This was not in the board packet. This is a revision that incorporates additional information that we've received over time to help frame it in terms of just what we're looking at doing. And then Kawhi, if you could go back to the panel view, and then we're going to finish on the timeline that was in the board packet. And then I'll turn it back to our board president. But what I'd like to also report is that here are some things that we are moving forward with and also watching the conditions. We, what we could be seeing next week is we could be seeing for Sacramento County, because of improving COVID conditions based on the tiers, we could be seeing us move out of Tier One and into Tier Two. And what that would mean, if things hold stable, is that districts could start looking at reopening as soon as mid-October if they are, if districts are ready with the precautions that need to be, to come into play, even without a waiver. What I want to share is that we do have, we are looking at a progression of how we work from distance learning to one-to-one assessment to small-group cohorts. And then again, if we're looking at starting, all campuses open if conditions permit, one way to look at it is we could be looking to be ready to reopen by November 17. So that's an example of how a progression could work. One of the pieces that I've brought up more than one time is that it is important, and it is following state and county guidance, that tracing and testing for employees be in place. We now have, we have now, we now have the tracing tools. And we now have access to testing services in the community of Galt and in other locations in Sacramento County so that we can move forward to implement a schedule for employees where employees would be getting what we call a symptomatic testing to be proactive in case we are carrying COVID-19, but we don't have symptoms. Where employees would be going through testing on a rotational basis once every two months. That is, we have the pieces in place to move forward to do that. There's information that I want to be able to message to all of our employees and working with our unions. But we do have that capability. And we do have the tracing tools in place as well. And again, I want to recognize the leadership of our Director of Educational Services, Donna Whitlock, along with our school nurse and work that they've been doing and sharing with Sacramento County Public Health to help us get into the position that we're in right now. So that is very important, that we're at that point right now. But again, that is not information before tonight that I have shared publicly. But we do, we are working to get that schedule in place for every employee in our district. We also have a survey that we want to get out no later than early next week, possibly by this Friday. It will be a survey that will go out to all parents and also to all employees. And the survey will be helping us to get a sense for what we need to prepare for when coming back. Getting a sense for awareness of families, of our parents, and also staff for the precautions that we need to be taking, whether it be with face coverings, to taking our temperatures, to remember to social distance, those kinds of things, to getting a sense from our employees in terms of perhaps there are employees that have been able to work with a distance learning environment that we're in, but now may not be able to do so when we look at returning on campus. We think that we need to get a sense for that. I want to say that we did message to our parents and to our staff and community that our Glee program was the program that we would provide year-round for families who did not want to transition back when we were ready to do so. We, in the survey, want to find out, you know, what families are thinking when we're looking at, when we're looking at returning safely to on-campus instruction, following precautions. We want to know our family's readiness to do that or if conditions have changed for them. We have said that we would not be providing additional distance learning for the full, for other families that were coming on. We had a cutoff date. But we're going to ask the question again because we need to see. Do, will we have some employees that may not be able to return back to school when it is, children are coming back on campus? And will that be, will we also have now families where conditions have changed in their lives too? And we want to survey that. We want to survey that and see if there are more adjustments that we need to make. Those are some examples of why, if, in fact, the county announces on October 13, things have stayed steady enough and districts that are ready can reopen. Right now, I do not see us ready to reopen fully on October 13. I do see us progressing with one-to-one assessment, which we, I'll talk more about. I do see us working together to look at how we can provide small-group services at our schools to really get prepared to make things work in November for everyone to come back. But at the same time, the time may come with conditions that may be changed, but maybe in Galt it's going to be different, where it may be where we do need to look at an elementary waiver. Because we do have, we do have the safety elements. We have most of the areas at this point that would result in a plan that we could submit to the county. But again, there is consultation that is required with our unions, with our parents, and with the community. And those are steps that we can take, that we can start taking, beginning with the survey this Friday and into October. I wanted to also share that we did start one-to-one assessment with children who are English learners taking the LCAP, that that work has started. We are working to go next to begin assessing some of our children receiving special education services. We want to work together with both of our unions to be able to make these things work. But we're working to branch out to one-to-one assessment for children receiving special education services next. And the other thing that I'd like to, last thing I would like to share is that one of the things we saw in another district in a different county that they did as they're preparing to reopen for on-campus instruction is that they prepared a, they're calling it a safety protocol form. It's kind of like some of the forms that we have in our parent handbook that goes home. But it's like a one-page form that on one page, whether you're an employee, or you're a parent, or you're a student in the district, it's something that lays out, this is what I need to do every day before I come to work, that follows safety precautions. This is what I need to do if I have symptoms. These are the agencies that I need to work through, you know, to make things go. All on one page. And it's something that employees would sign off on, something that parents would sign off on, and also students that, you know, can understand those protocols. We have drafts of that as well that were prepared as of this morning that we would like to move forward with when we're ready to expand our services on campus. The reason being is that the precautions that need to be taken in a pandemic that we've been working so hard to prepare for, it is, it is operating with a different mindset and practices. And even though we may be watching training videos that are required in the district, and I'm a parent who's been studying everything that has been coming out on this, it's just, it's very helpful to just keep revisiting things clearly and as things become, and revisit things over time. So we are, we are making some really good progress here, beginning this week. So we are, we are making some really good progress here, beginning this week with one one assessment for children, for for English learners that are that are starting up, moving for special education children next that need special education assessment. We're working to move that forward. And then progressing to small cohort groups, something that we talked about as an idea, and we want to test this in the survey that will go out and see if there are other ideas out there. But one of the things that we were looking at was to prioritize, say, October, November, our children who receive special day class services to be part of the small group cohorts, to also look at our young children TK3 that may need extra help in literacy and language development, and then look at middle school and possibly some extra help, kind of like what I'd call learning hubs for middle school students that when they're doing the independent work, they could use some extra help along with SDC students to help them with independent work. Those are some ideas that we want to test through the surveys, but also provide space so that people who complete the survey, whether they be employees or parents, that they can give us ideas in terms of what they would like to see as we move forward with that. And I did forget to say this also is that yesterday, Donna Whitlock, Director of Educational Services, Jennifer Collier, our Extended Learning Supervisor, and myself, we met with city staff, city leaders with Parks and Recreation to look at how we could work together to provide childcare services at our school locations. And this, we have city support that when we are ready, if there is enough need, that we can work together to provide that at our school locations as well. I know that there are board members and myself and others that have received feedback that there appears to be a need to look at what we could do to provide childcare services at our schools when we move back to on-campus learning along, along with families who are essential workers and prioritizing those groups for childcare services and and then see if we can do more than that if space allows. I know I I I shared with Armando Solis with Galt Parks and Recreation that I was going to share this with our board tonight publicly, is that, you know, the city this last summer, they, they provided some camps with city staff and they were operating in cohorts and rotations and following precautions and cleaning between sessions and between movements of students. They had no COVID cases resulting from that to their knowledge and no issues with staff as well. And I just share that with you because I think that the precautions that we are taking, that we are putting in place are setting the stage where we can move beyond one-to-one assessment to small group cohorts in October, November, and then work towards that goal of on-campus, not the way we knew it last February, but again, looking at smaller numbers of students, but all of them getting back, maybe not every day to start with, but getting back to campus with with the ways that we've identified in the transitional model. So that is an update about some of our progress, some of our survey work, and how we could look at this in a progression way along with our work with our unions. But this is where board members, you know, your leadership, your direction, questions or comments from you and our great staff that are on me, it's like whatever we can do to to support you in questions, comments, or direction, we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Karen. That was a great update and great work and great collaboration going on with the city for when we can finally open and what programs we can get back on campus safely. So do any board members have any questions, comments?
I guess. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I got, I'm frustrated and all this, I don't know. It's, it seems like we're lagging in getting this waiver going. I don't know what the what's going on, like fully what the issues are, but in the survey that we took, there's fifty-five, sixty percent of the parents have said they want, they want their kids back in school. So to me, that I'm thinking, well, that's our waiver. All the parents that I know, they've all like asking about the waiver. And I just, I don't know, it just seems we're always on the forefront. In the last 10 years I've been on the board, we've been on the forefront of pushing things. And now it just seems like we're, we're lagging in things. Yeah, I'm saying I'm getting frustrated. I know my kids are ready to get back to school. Other parents that I know, their kids, everybody's asking like, why is it taking us so long to get this going? Yeah, and it's, I gotta say, it's getting frustrating because it's, it's like the same update every time. I, and that's, that's my feeling. I just think that, I don't know, it's, we know where our parents stand on this, it said, it said in the survey. So I'm just letting you guys know, I'm getting frustrated because it seems like we are treading the same water the last few meetings we've had.
Wes, I'm kind of curious, what, what other Sacramento County public school districts are have have a waiver in doing in-class instruction?
Well, that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that. I know that, but I'm just saying, it seems like every time we have an update, it's like the same update. I don't know if we need to be able to show, like get something on the website so we can see where we are and our and our goal towards getting that waiver or something because I'm just saying, because I, I don't, I'm not seeing where we are, what we've accomplished to get the waiver. I just keep hearing the same, the same story over and over and over. I think that's same with parents as probably well. If we could see where we are, get check off the checkmarks of what we've done to get the waiver. So yeah.
Well, the, the county has to be eligible to, to get there first, and then there's those parameters about the tracing and some of those other things that we have to have in place. So are you suggesting that at least have those things lined up and then we're just waiting for the county in which we, you know, that's a moving target?
Yeah. Yeah, I just, it would be nice to actually look, I should probably go to like the, what the Galt, the elementary website, and I could, you know, we could tell parents, hey, go to the website and you could see exactly what we've done and what we need to do to get to where we, where we need to be. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to keep my whole political stuff out of the, out of the whole thing, but it's just, like I said, I, we, I like listen to news of like, right, oh, we're close. Well, how close are we? Right? I mean, I mean, that's, he's the same story every, every week too, every time you hear his news conference. Where are we? You're saying we're close. Well, how close does it, what's that mean? I'm trying to keep track of the COVID cases in Sac County and then, but like one day it's three hundred and thirty, the next day it's zero, the next day it's two hundred, the next day it's zero, the next day it's like four hundred, the next day it's ten. And that's bouncing all over the place. So I, I just, it's, I'm frustrated, I'm getting frustrated, and I know the parents that I know, I've talked to, which are quite a few, they're all, it's just the frustrations to the point where, well, where is Galt in the, in the realm of waiver? If this is our waiver, our goal is that waiver for right now, but where are we at that goal? I think it would help with a lot of the answers.
I think Wes, what would probably be helpful for you, and I don't know if we, you know, would need like a dashboard or something on the website, but I'm thinking if, if we can at least compare Galt to the rest of Sacramento County in terms of cases, then that might, you know, give us more, you know, impetus behind, you know, whether or not we even want to pursue a waiver.
Yeah.
Because obviously, we're doing worse than the rest of the county, we probably know reason too, but if we're doing way better than the rest of the county, then that's probably at a point in time where we would be saying, hey, then maybe we should go ahead and try to pursue a waiver. So that might help, you know, at least I think information is really going to be, you know, helpful in terms of, you know, all of us trying to make those kind of decisions. Hey, Karen, I just, one question about contract, contact tracing. What does our plan for contact tracing look like? I mean, is it uncommon? I mean, is it manual? Is it electronic? I mean, what sort of, what does that look like?
Yeah, you let me, let me start with, with the testing piece, and then I'm going to segue Donna to, to you on that. First of all, I just want to say again, we just got confirmation, you know, from the county, gosh, I want to say last week, that, you know, this is what we can have in place for the testing. And I mean, that just, that just happened, that just happened. And so what we needed to do was make sure that we have tools for the tracing piece, which Donna Whitlock will talk to us about, but also how it is then that we would rotate employees as part of the symptomatic, say, requirement that all of our employees get the testing. And Mr. Kegel, I just wanted to reiterate that we're working on getting that set up. That's part of the waiver process too. And again, we have not messaged that before tonight about, you know, what we were able to work that through. But even with getting employees rotated through for, say, the, the testing on a proactive way, that's not enough. There are tracing tools that we need to have and procedures. And so Donna, would you, would you share, what does that look like? What does it even mean when we're talking about tracing? And you're muted.
So what, what it means when we talk about contact tracing is that when there, there, if there were to be a case of someone who tested positive for COVID-19 on a campus, what we are required to do is that first thing we, you know, notify the site admin, and then our district nurse will take over from there. And what we do in a, we need to do it within hours, is we speak to the person, or in this case, it could be a parent if it's a younger child, speak to the parent or the staff member and identify all those other staff or students that they could have been in contact with. For example, could have been office staff, they could have been in a, if we had small cohorts going, it could have been the children and the teacher. The first thing we do for contact tracing is identify all those who had contact with the person who tested positive. And then we
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about contact on the school site?
Yes.
Not outside of school?
No, it not outside of school. However, for example, if it was a student, we would, we also contact, you know, people who are in their household as well. But this is for contacting those who are on our school campuses. And we contact each of those personally, our district nurse will ask some of the screening to, screening questions. Most importantly, were they, were they less than six feet apart from the employee? Example, were they, was it over fifteen minutes? Was their contact over fifteen minutes? And were they wearing their personal protection equipment? And so we, by tracing all of those contacts, we, there's different recommendations. But I did want to say is before we even start the phone calls, the first thing that our district nurse does is she's on the phone with Sac County Public Health. And in the short time, probably in the next two weeks, we will be introduced to the Sac County Public Health, will have a school team that will be able to guide our district nurse and our administrators every step of the way in making those contact tracing. So it's, and actually, is it on computerized? No, right now it's not. It's on a fillable form, but it's very important that we keep all that documentation. Part of that contact tracing is asking them, did they pre-screen before they arrived at work or before they arrived at school? So that's another part of the, of the tracing is to try to make sure that they had been pre-screened.
And then who's responsible for managing that data? Or would that be the district nurse?
Yeah, right now, it is, it is our district nurse that who is overseeing that because what's most important right now is we get this, the process down, the protocols, we get it down, so it's, it's automatic and it's second nature to us. We know exactly what we, what we need to do. Sac County Public Health has given us a really great handbook with different scenarios. So we should know if a staff member tested positive or did a staff member report that they had made contact with someone or, for example, you know, were they exhibiting symptoms? We need to know exactly what to do in each of those scenarios. So that's what we're working on, making sure that we're clear on. And I did want to say as far as the, you know, the waiver, the waiver progress that Wes was talking about, we've been working really diligently, like Karen said, on the testing and tracing with Sac County Public Health. But we did complete our, a plan that include all of the health and safety guidance, which is a requirement, and that was just completed this afternoon. So as we've been moving towards the red tier, we've also been working on all of the requirements.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom, for the question.
Is there any other comments from the board?
Mrs. Bach, may I ask you, I just, oh, I'm sorry, Gracie, Mrs. Our Board President Mollison, I was just, Quay, I was just going to say that I know that, you know, we have other action items that are coming up, but was, were there any, any hands that were raised for public comment on that report or?
No, Dr. Shauer, there's no request for comment.
Okay, so if there's no further comment or discussion on LCAP Goal Two or LCAP Goal One Report Two, I think we can move on to the governance team discussion, the California School Board Association Annual Education Conference that is virtual this year.
Right, so that's a, that's a shift, isn't it? You know, for how CSBA is doing, you know, the conference. We wanted, I wanted to include that in the board packet because there, and there's time for board registration on this, but I also wanted to share that we've been working to do the follow-up on the pending item for governance team, say, consultation or training related to social media and governance, government's teamwork. And that I think Mr. Silva, Board Member Silva, had sat in on, you were part of a session, I think at CSBA last year, they're telling us, CSBA, Quay Bach has been researching this, that they are looking to do some type of social media session again, which we're wanting, they're going to send us a description of that so we can see if that might be something. Also, but again, working, Mr. Silva, with the consultant that you suggested, we're really trying to work with him from CSBA to see if there's something that he could customize for our board, but we just have not gotten that far. But that was one of the reasons I wanted to bring this forward. There may be a board discussion about strategy on conference attendance. You know, it's still early in the game right now, but I wanted to just bring that up also in the context of the social media pending item. So back, back to you, Board President.
All right, thank you. No, it should be interesting how they do it this year. Do any of the four, because I know we'll only have three of us at that time that are here right now, any discussion on this?
Yeah, I'm still looking at my schedule in terms of availability. I guess one of the advantages, if it's a Zoom conference, you know, that since I don't have to physically travel to be there, that maybe I don't make all the sessions that I would normally make if I was, you know, in-person attendance. But then I guess, you know, the question I would have is, you know, if you only want to attend like one session, you know, do you have to pay for the full if you only want to attend like one session, you know, do you have to pay for the full conference fee? So, yeah, I'd feel this obligation to spend as much time there as I could, obviously, if the district was paying for me to be there. But I can honestly say I, I got so much good information from attending that conference last year. It really helped me, especially being a relatively new board member. So I'm definitely looking at seeing if I can make it work for me.
All right, thank you. I know it's the middle of the week, I don't know work-wise if I would be able to even virtually, because I drive for work and we're starting back on the sixth of October for that, so traveling and fun stuff. So I'll have to look into my availability as well. Any other discussion or any, those that have attended in the past, want to bring anything to light or be ready to move on? Okay, so then we'll move on to routine matters and new business. The consent calendar. Karen, is there anything you want to highlight in the consent calendar?
Yes, in, in the consent calendar, we do have for hirers and retirees, we do have an employee who will be retiring, not till February, but we're putting it now because we'll have to look at transitions for how we'll make this work. Lori Matthews is retiring and she has served in our district for 28 years.
Incredible. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and she currently serves as our human resources coordinator.
All right, congratulations to her.
And then we do have some donations also, if you would like me to go there, okay? All right, River Oaks Elementary School PG&E employee gave $252. At Marengo Ranch Elementary School, another PG&E donation of $562. At McCaffrey Middle School, Renee DiTavio donated $100 for school site use. And there was another PG&E employee giving $954.98. Another PG&E donation to Lake Canyon Elementary School of $350. And then for the Gallup Therapeutic Writing Program, Melody McCarty donated $200 in honor of Diane Casado, who served as the Secretary at Valley Oaks Elementary School for many years. Those are donations.
I remember Diane, she was there when I was there and that was a while ago. Incredible, I have to say I'm impressed that we're still getting donations with campuses being closed. So it says a lot about how much this community cares about our students and our schools. So thank you very much. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve 202.115, the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, John, do I have a second?
Second.
That was Tom, thank you.
Thank you, I have a motion from John Gordon to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Tom Silva. Grace Molson?
Yeah, I.
Matthew Felix?
Yes.
Wesley Kegel?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, okay, the next agenda item is 202.117, the Board Consideration of Approval, the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District, Actuarial Study of Retiree Health Liabilities as of June 30, 2020. All right, good evening. Tonight we present to you our actuarial study that shows our, our liability for retiree benefits. And this study is required by all public employers that pay the cost or any cost at all to the health benefits for retirees. And of course, our school district does. And so we have to have, present you to this report annually. And tonight we have with us, I see he just joined us, we have Luis Murillo. He is from Total Compensation Services and he has completed this study for us. And he has a brief PowerPoint of about four or five slides. He will highlight some of the main, the key points that we thought the board would like to know based on this study and our liability. So Luis, thank you for being with us tonight. And I think Quai will present the, will share your PowerPoint. Thank you, Quai.
Thank you, good evening, Board members and members of the public. So I'm here today to really present the results of the June 30th, 2020 valuation for your district's retired health benefits that you're providing your employees. And as a reminder, the purpose of the valuation is to estimate the cost of the district for providing these benefits to your employees. Next slide, please. So just quick overview, we will review the current benefits, offer to your employees, present the results of the valuation, and then look to the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. So in general, the district provides employees with medical, dental and vision benefits at retirement. Benefits are paid for five years, but end at age 65. So Medicare H, certificate and management employees must retire on or after age 55 with 20 years of service. Classified employees must retire on or after age 60 with 20 years of service. The table below just reflects the counts, your employee counts and retiree counts as of the valuation date of the, of the plan. Next slide, please. So, you know, before we jump into providing the results of the valuation, we just wanted to give you a few terms to note. First, the total OPEB liability, this is the estimated cost for providing this benefit at retirement and it's prorated for service through the valuation date. The total OPEB liability grows each year as your employees earn an additional year of service. The TOL is also a debt, you know, there's a cost, there's, you know, that for instance, every year, so it grows with interest. As your employees get one year closer to retirement or those that are earning, are getting paid the benefit currently, so your current retirees. And then the fiduciary net position, this just represents, represents the market value of assets. Currently, the district does not have any assets set aside in a trust for, for this liability. So there are no assets, so there's no FMP. And then the net OPEB liability is the unfunded liability. And since there are no assets, the total OPEB liability is the same as the net OPEB liability. Next slide, please. Okay, so here, you know, sorry, the balance at the beginning of, or as of the prior year was 5.3 million, so this is the accrued liability. So again, you, the total cost, the total estimated cost for your employees and retirees getting this benefit, and then it's prorated for service through the valuation date. And so at the beginning of the year was 5.3, it grew about 200,000 to 5.5. And that's your, that's your liability as of 2020. Below, we have some of the reasons this liability increased. So your employees earned an additional year of service. Also, there's that interest that I talked about that, you know, increases the liability, so that increased it about 550,000. And then, you know, every valuation, we are trying to estimate the cost, so we make a lot of assumptions as to what we, when you expect your employees to retire, what the healthcare cost is going to be at that time. And so there's always going to be differences between what we actually estimate and what actually happens. And those are called experience gains or losses. So you can see that we actually anticipated costs to be higher than they actually were. So that decreased the liability about 760,000. And then you paid out benefits for the year to your retirees, so that decreases the liability as well, because you've settled those payments. And then there were assumption changes. The biggest one was just the change in the discount rate. Every year, we're required to tie your discount rate to a municipal bond rate. And so what the discount rate is, is the, how we bring those future benefit payments that you're expected to make to today's dollars. And so a higher interest rate yields a lower liability. In this case, the interest rate went down, so increased your liability, all else equal. So that's why you see that, that increase there. Any questions? Next slide, please. So just looking at net ahead to next fiscal year, we're required to give you this report every year. Next year is what is called a roll forward report. We don't have to collect information really from the district to, to provide this report to you. We're just going to roll forward the liabilities from, from 2020. And so for next year, what you're expected to make in retiree payments is about 162,000. Next slide, please. So that's it for the presentation, any questions?
So I just have one quick question, and so then pay, pay as you go is what really affects our, our, our cash flows then?
Yes, yeah, and the pay as you go for 2021 is 162,000, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. So we would, if there are no further questions, and we would ask the board to approve our study for our benefit, liability of benefits.
I'll move to approve item 202.117.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Matt?
Thank you, I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 202117, seconded by Matthew Felix. Grace Molson?
I.
John Gordon?
Hi.
Wesley Kegel?
Hi.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. So the next agenda item is 202.118, the Board Consideration of Approval of the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan of the 2020, 2020, 21 year.
There you go, all right. Well, again, this was a new requirement because the three-year LCAP process was put on hold because of the pandemic. But the local continuity and attendance plan is, was a new requirement, which we had a public hearing about it with our Board of Trustees last Tuesday night. And the plan was also posted up on our website for public review and feedback. The plan organized by the impact of COVID-19, stakeholder engagement, areas related to learning, technology, serving high needs learners, addressing learning loss, addressing mental health and social emotional meeting, excuse me, emotional wellbeing, and then increasing or improving services for high needs learners. Those are the plan requirements that we conducted the public hearing with our Board of Trustees last Tuesday night. You know, in light of where we are right now and, and what we have published for board consideration, we're recommending, recommending, we're recommending approval tonight.
All right, thank you, I know a lot of work has gone into this. So is there any board discussion? Because if, there's no board, just, John, did you want to say something?
No, I, I, the only thing I, you know, I know we talked about this at, you know, at the public hearing last meeting, so I just kind of curious, as we'll get to, to see if there's any public comment, I mean, you know, we did talk about this before, so.
Right, sorry, notice my Zoom's being a little slow, so I'm trying to make sure I catch those that want to speak and not go too fast. Okay, so if there's no discussion, because we did talk about this at the special board meeting, gosh, was it last week or the week before? Time's flying. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve 202.11.
Thanks, Wes, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, I have a motion from Wes, Wesley Kegel to approve item number 202118, seconded by John Gordon. Grace Molson?
I.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Hi.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have agenda item 202.119, the Public Hearing Regarding the Sufficiency of Instructional Materials and Determination Through a Resolution Whether Each Student Has Sufficient Textbooks and Instructional Materials Personate to Education Code 60119.
Thank you, Gracie, education code, as you mentioned, the 60119 specifies that each board hold a public hearing in regards to ensuring that all students have all the instructional materials that they need. We ask the board to open and close a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials.
Okay. Thank you, so then with that said, I'm going to open it up to the public hearing. And on Zoom, would they raise their hand?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's correct, no one has raised their hand, Grace.
Okay, going once, going twice, okay, so I will close public hearing. And we will move on to agenda item 202.120, Board Consideration of Approval of the Resolution Number Four of the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District Resolution Regarding Sufficiency of Instructional Materials.
Thank you, we are requesting that the board approve the resolution certifying that the GALT Joint Union Elementary School District is in compliance with the Education Code 60119, ensuring that each student has sufficient instructional materials, which are consistent with the content and the cycles of the curriculum frameworks adopted by the California State Board of Education.
Question?
Yes.
Is this the same as the, is it called like the Williams Act or is this a little?
It is, this is part of that, this is something that we do every year, Wes, just making sure that you understand and you approve and as we show that all students have all the materials that they need.
Thank you, is there any more question or discussion? No, if not, then do I have a motion to approve 2.0, I'm sorry, 202.120?
I'll move to approve item 202.120.
Was that a motion by Matt? Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, I have a motion from Matthew Felix to approve item number 202120, seconded by Wes Kegel. Grace Molson?
I.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Tom Gordon?
Hi.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Quai. And is there any public comments for topics that are not on the agenda?
No, Grace Molson, there is no public comment request.
Okay, then if there is nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you very much, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.